Thank you Chair, and thank you Dr. Sy for being here. And to this presentation, as a former teacher, I've also used the book "Wamah Kea."
Oh, right on. Did you have the PowerPoints and sample tests and everything? Okay, good.
Watching your presentation, I just had one question about the... And just a clarification, you said something about a joint resolution. And can you explain what a joint resolution with the US Constitution? And I know that it was just for their municipal boundaries. So if you could just expound on a joint resolution.
Okay, perfect. So, within the United States legislative process, right? They can enact basically two types of laws. Joint resolutions, which are agreements between the House and Senate, and then signed into law by the President. Or a bill that becomes an act, okay? Both are municipal laws. Now, a Senate or a House may pass a resolution on its own, and all it is is a position statement. Yeah, taking a position on something. But if you take a joint resolution, the difference between a joint resolution as a law and a bill that becomes an act is that the act is enforceable. A joint resolution is not enforceable. It's still almost like a position statement. Like, an organization passes a resolution. We recognize this day as Kamehameha Day, right? If you violate that, there's no execution of that. But a bill that becomes an act is carried out. So like the Statehood Act, or the Organic Act, yeah? Something to implement. So, when they pass the joint resolution annexing Hawaii, number one, it's a position statement by both House and Senate. And number two, it is a municipal law limited to US territory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Lee, thank you Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Dr. Sy. Thank you for coming.
No, thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. I have a couple of basic questions.
Sure.
Now, this issue... I can't think of a better word, sovereignty. Has been discussed for instance in the 70s, 60s and 70s. I remember my parents talking about it, my grandparents. But, and I'm also part of Hawaii. But for some reason, the Hawaiian community has remained fractured. And there has been difficulty becoming united and organized. Now, if everybody feels strongly about the issue of sovereignty, and I started using the wrong word, but... Why can't people get together and agree so that you can have a legitimate organization? Whether it's that legislative assembly, or whatever you call it? To start to move the ball forward?
No, good question. Now, there's a difference between what is called the political process and a legal process. Okay, so a political process is movement. It's compromise. It's coming together. It's trying to accomplish something that isn't here. That's a political process, right? Based on ideology, ideas. I don't use that in a negative way, but ideas to pursue, right? Addressing inequalities. Okay, now, what I'm addressing here is a legal process. A legal process that starts off with terms. Terminology and definitions. Theoretical framework, or legal theory that applies to certain issues. So, when the sovereignty movement began, they didn't have this information that you folks have right now. It was operating on certain assumptions. That Hawaii is a part of the United States. That native Hawaiians are suffering disparity, which is true. And that they have similar rights as other Native Americans in Aotearoa, Maui's. Very much put in a colonial context. That Hawaii was taken over, and a native group was subjugated. I'm not denying that. But, out of that process, sovereignty was an aspiration, not a reality. And we start off with the definition of sovereignty. So according to Black's Law Dictionary, sovereignty, all it means is supreme law over the land. To the exclusion of other supreme laws over other land. That's sovereignty. So sovereignty and independence are synonymous, right? So the United States has sovereignty and independence over its territory. That's not subject to any people's belief. But that is actually subject... They are subject to the law of that reality, okay? So when the... When groups have been addressing this, they've been drawing information, and actually covered that in my... It's in Chapter 11 in the book. Because I had to address the sovereignty movement. So they're operating more on a... They say that the beginning of the sovereignty movement, which is the Hawaiian Renaissance, was Holt. Yeah, John Dominus Holt, in his book Being Hawaiian. Because he was addressing being proud. And that started Hawaiian pride. Started music like Gabby Pahinui, Slack Key, Sunday Manoa. And then you have Protect Hola de Johana that moved it into the political realm. And then you have George Helm, Walter Ritty, PKO, right? Then it branched into the sovereignty movement. So it all operated on information that was assumptions. When we now look at Hawaii's history, the term sovereignty applies to a country, not a people. And that's called a sovereign state, not the sovereign people. And at the Hawaiian Kingdom as a sovereign entity under occupation, there are these certain rules that apply. And that's what you folks saw in this presentation. That's why this has nothing to do with the sovereignty movement, or a political movement. This has everything to do with a legal movement of understanding of what's going on, right? So, it's not a matter of getting people together to believe anything. But rather getting people to be educated on what's going on for people to make informed decisions in whatever capacity they're in, right? So, that's where we're at right now, right?
Thank you. To me, I think it's a really fine line. Because a lot of people have strong feelings on both sides of the issue. But, okay, getting back to just the legal side of this matter. What happens before you initiate and panel a legitimate legislative assembly to review all the laws, et cetera? How do we operate in the meantime?
Right. No, no, I got your point. Excellent point, because Mike McCartney was asking those same questions in my meeting with him. Okay, first of all, during the law of... Under the law of occupation, called international humanitarian law, an occupied state does not have a legislative body. They don't. Because you can't have elections during occupation because it's the occupier that is responsible for administering the laws of the occupied state according to the Hague and Geneva Conventions. Not the occupied state, okay? That's number one. That's just the rule, right? Now, when the occupation comes to an end, is when that legislative assembly will be reconvened. And that's all inherent in the Hague and Geneva Conventions. All occupations are supposed to be provisional. The only reason why this was allowed to last over 126 years right now? Because nobody knew anything. We're brainwashed to believing something that's not true. That's what allowed it to continue, which only compounded the problem. That's where we are. We're dealing with a very complex problem. So that legislature to be reconvened will have to be done when the occupation comes to an end. And those would have to be comprised of Hawaiian subjects. Now, the question is who are Hawaiian subjects, right? Because the term Hawaiian subject, to be a Hawaiian subject in the Kingdom era... And I covered this in my dissertation. You can acquire it three ways. One, us solely, which is natural born. See, so an example of somebody natural born in the Hawaiian Kingdom that became a Hawaiian subject was Sanford Doel. So Sanford Doel's mother and father were American missionaries. But Sanford Doel was born in Hawaii in the 1930s. He became a Hawaiian subject by birth, but American by parentage. So he was a dual citizen. He later became a judge and then attorney in the Hawaiian Kingdom. That's called nationality. The second way of acquiring Hawaiian citizenship under Hawaiian Kingdom law is usanguenis, which is by parentage. So if two Hawaiian parents travel to America, and they give birth to a child in California in 1881, that child is an American by birth, natural born, but a Hawaiian by parentage. It's dual citizen. And the third way is naturalization. You can apply to be naturalized under Hawaiian law with a five-year residency. And there's also another way called denizen. And that's a British common law type of granting of nationality. Now, the law of occupation is set up to preserve the status... Protect the status quo of the occupied state. That's the purpose of the law of occupation. So you can't change it. And then the occupation will eventually come to an end. So as part of the law of the occupied... The law that protects the status quo of the occupied state, international law prevents acquisition of Hawaiian citizenship or citizenship of an occupied state by birth, or by naturalization, or denization. You can only acquire citizenship in an occupied state by being a direct descendant of a Hawaiian subject who was a Hawaiian subject before the occupation. And that would be before January 17th, 1893. Irrespective of race, color, creed, or gender, yeah? Now, that example, that situation there, the Latvian states, the Baltic states, Latvia, Lithuania and Estonia in 1991 had to deal with that. Because they were claiming Latvians... Well, Russians and Ukrainians were claiming to be Latvians because they were born in Latvia before Stalin's invasion in 1941. That means they acquired it through natural born. Latvia prevented them, says no. And they based it on race. They ended up violating the human rights of these Latvians who were Russian and Ukrainian. And they had to give reports to the Human Rights Committee on Human Rights. The European Union on Human Rights Committee. So, we need to learn from other examples around the world as to what we shouldn't be doing, and what path are we on? Because the path that people have been put on are put on assumptions of I believe this, or I think this. As opposed to, this is the definition of this, and this is the definition of that. Where are you? Now, where you want to go from there? That's where informed decision has to be made with education. Because this is a completely different animal than what we're used to. And I'm not trying to make it simple. It is very complex. That's why even more so, people need to step back to make sure that they do their due diligence. To make sure that this is what I think it is. Because if I take a step, could that step, now in consequence to the law of occupation, be considered a war crime? Where somebody else is looking at it, not me? So that's what we need to be careful of. And that's what prompted Jennifer Ruggles from the Hawaii County Council to do what she did, to ask those hard questions. And it led to everything else. But I want to keep in mind here that we're all part of this situation. I'm not talking to insurgents over here. I'm talking to aunties and uncles and cousins, and fellow teachers. This is not telling people you're wrong. It's just, it's coming down. And this is what happens when people start to get educated. There's consequences. And there's decision-making, and hard decisions, right? So, hope I was able to elaborate on that a bit.
Yes, thank you. But I did need clarification on how do you go about handling this legislative assembly?
That's going to happen after the occupation comes to an end. That's all part of the Treaty of Peace. That, okay, so the Treaty of Peace...
Who chooses those people? Do you elect them?
Yeah, they have to be elected. Now, before they get elected, you have to do a registration of the citizenry. And that's all under Hawaiian Kingdom law. The gubernatorial districts and everything. It's all from the Kingdom era. In fact, what people don't realize is that the state of Hawaii infrastructure is actually from the Kingdom era. It came from the Kingdom era. All they changed was the Queen and her cabinet kept everybody in place and forced them to sign Oats of Allegiance to the new regime. And that's where that song "Kallanana Pua" came from. The Royal Hawaiian Band refused to sign that oath, to sign that Oath of Allegiance, which ended up forcing them to be terminated. They didn't have a job. And one of the lyrics in that song, which is in Hawaiian, but in English it says, "Do not sign the paper of the enemy with its sin of annexation and loss of civil rights." So, the system we have today is actually the Hawaiian Kingdom system. What we have today, we just got to revamp it. That's what I have in my dissertation. That's what I explained to my doctoral committee. It's not as complicated as we think it is. But it begins with education, so people are speaking the right terminology in order to know how to apply a particular action or actions. But that process is inherent in the law of occupation when it comes to an end. It will naturally take place.
Thank you. Counselor Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for being here. And I really appreciate the approach you have to this. It's very inclusive and educational. And it reduces the amount of alarmists, you know, approached. So my question was kind of following on what Counselor Lee had asked about the Legislative Assembly of the Hawaiian Kingdom. Because I was understanding the way you put it on the slide that that was what was going to be necessary to reconcile the laws of the provisional laws of the realm. So if we're waiting till occupation ends to get to that point, what do we do in the meantime? And when you use the word "we need to pause," what does that mean to you? And what does that mean to us as council members, to state legislators? Can you kind of fill in that gap?
Sure, excellent question. So let me just clarify that proclamation of provisional laws. So under the law of occupation, it recognizes that an executive branch during occupations has what is called quasi-legislative ability in the absence of a legislature, okay? So, just like what the Belgian Council of Regency did, through proclamation, they established provisional laws. But because they're not the legislative branch, and they're doing it under the doctrine of necessity, it is provisional. So as soon as that proclamation was made, 2014, that's the law. What's going to happen when the occupation comes to an end is when the Legislative Assembly wants to convene, we'll need to ratify and make it into statute. That's a matter of Hawaiian domestic law. This is under law of occupation. So it is a... It was a step to deal with a exigency, right? Provisionally, without violating certain rights of people and rights of institutions, and still reserving for final ratification to be done by a duly constituted legislative assembly. So we're pretty much just following exactly what other governments in exile did during World War II. That's really, that's the game plan. And how do you maintain that? Because the importance of legislating is to provide and afford protection to the people of that particular territory. That's the purpose of it, right? So in light of the fact that in Belgium, there wasn't a legislative body, but the Germans there, and the Germans weren't administering Belgian law. That's what prompted the Belgian Council to proclaim law. But it would have to be up to the Belgian, to the... I'm sorry. It would have to be up to the Germans at that time, the occupier, to apply those laws. So the Council could proclaim provisionally, but it would have to take a state of Hawaii to transform itself into a military government, which can happen by martial law. And this is what I explained to Mr. McCartney. There is a way to do that within the framework of the state of Hawaii constitutional system. And then administer those laws that are not inconsistent with Hawaiian Kingdom law. So an example would be IRS taxes. So IRS taxes should not be applied in Hawaii to anybody, unless you're an American citizen, a citizen that can be taxed from abroad. So IRS taxes is a municipal law of the United States. Now, Hawaii taxes and county taxes can continue so long as they don't run contrary to Hawaiian Kingdom law. So these taxes that are currently collected is what pays for the police. It's what pays for the fire department. For me, as an instructor, teachers in the public schools. So that can continue to take place. And there is a way to actually provide for that transition. It's actually much more simple than we really think. Because we're dealing with an infrastructure that already exists. Not trying to create another infrastructure. We just needed to understand what happened in 1893. And then with that appropriate diagnosis, then we can apply a remedial prescription. What people have been doing is trying to apply remedial prescriptions without even knowing anything about 1893. And they just start saying, "I think we should do this." So, there is a way to do that. And I can get that information to Madam Chair on the report that I gave to Mike McCartney. And that might be something for you folks to review.
Okay, Richard. So I appreciate that you're using the word "military law," it's not a hostile thing. It says what you were advising, Mr. McCartney, that they should do, correct?
No, it's... So, okay, so, under the law of occupation, the occupier is supposed to establish a military government to administer the laws of the occupied state.
But this is what you were advising?
So I'm going to get there. So, a military government, which basically, like in Iraq, they take over the head, and they created what is called the Coalition Provisional Authority in Iraq. After the... That was a second go for it. All they did was take over Saddam Hussein's position. But everyone in government stayed the same. So it's not a military government. It's just run by the military in accordance with the law of occupation. Now, there is a way for that to take place within the United... Within each of the states, okay? Through its constitution. It's called declaring martial law. So when you declare martial law, like what took place in 1941, December 8th or 9th, I forgot, the day after General Short was appointed by Poindexter, the governor, as the military governor. All he did was replace the governor. Legislature suspended, executive judicial continued. Now, under that system, under American law, were a lot of abuses by General Short regarding Japanese internment, taking of properties, which was later addressed later. You got reparations. What regulates a military government, or the state of Hawaii to form a military government, would be the laws of occupation. And that's what I have in the report to Mike, to distinguish there. Because what we're looking at was how... How do you address this situation with what we currently have? That's really the issue. And that was what was proposed to him.
So, I just wanted to clarify, you're not advocating that we stop killing everybody on what we're doing? No.
No.
And waits for something to happen?
No. Yeah, no, no, don't wait for anything.
I understand, but I think it's good to clarify that.
Yes, absolutely.
So that, you know, we fully understand what the intent is.
Yep, absolutely. And this is really a matter of resource management. Really, it is. It's resource managing. It's not changing institutions. It's first of all, what are the rules? Look at, assess, adjust. That's what I meant, take pause. How do you adjust? I'm not saying stop. Just take pause, ask the right questions, get some advice, move. That's really all this is about. Because I'm not here to shut down government, no. I'm here to transition government to make sure that it's lawful in light of all the violations that have happened. Yeah, because our people in Hawaii are getting hurt. And education is still taking place.
Thank you so much for being here, Mr....
Thank you.
Counselor Lee.
Thank you for acknowledging me, even though I'm not a voting member of the committee. Thank you. But I'm anxious to ask this because I need to leave for a meeting. And, but I wanted to get started. Does the... In the interim, does the legislative body have to be a statewide body during the occupation, as we're awaiting the occupation? Can the legislative body be countywide?
I would say, based on what I reviewed, yes. But what the legislative body does at the county and state level may not be the same duties that the legislative body is doing now. It may include some, but it may exclude some duties. See, that's... The issue is how do you continue to maintain governance in light of the information? But yes, to answer that question, it's not disbanding, but it's reorienting.
Yes. So, in the interim, as the page CR107 that, you know, Ms. Carroll had proposed, I looked at it and I see that that is probably something that this council would probably propose also, as a step to move forward. Because I think when we talk about this issue, what you're presenting today, is that it may shock some people, but it may make other people very happy. But in the interim, I think the education was needed. And I think sometimes in our own head, we're worried, we're scared, we're fearful. But we just got to take a deep breath and say, "Let's try to right this wrong that we've been waiting for for so many years." And I believe it's on my heart that the council that is seated today is here for the right purpose at the right time. That things are in where they're supposed to be. And so I think that this is the time. And I think this council is strong enough and bold enough. And they have the strength to be able to take this task on. So Chair, I leave it up to you to make the recommendation for a resolution if you decide to choose so. Thank you.
Can I maybe respond real quickly? So, you're correct that one possible opportunity that the council can do, whether through a committee or the council at large, a task force. Now, House Concurrent Resolution 107 introduced by Meli Carroll was to investigate the status of the two executive agreements. We're kind of past that already. Yeah, that was the beginning in 2011. So much has happened since then. But actually, a task force can be established to look into issues of taxation, legislation, you know, specifically what it is, and seek out experts to provide recommendations for decision-making. And that's something that is within the duties of the council and the committee to inquire, to look into, yeah? No, that, I agree. Yes, mahalo.
Thank you, Member Kama. I'll take Members Seemura, followed by Member Mordena.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. This is very interesting. So I'm just curious, and what your opinion is, or where you stand on the Office of... Like, OHA, Office of Hawaiian Affairs?
So, to me, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is another political subdivision of the state of Hawaii as the Maui County is, the Hawaii County, DHHL. I don't hold anything at a higher level because of maybe native Hawaiian orientation, right? Because under Hawaiian Kingdom law, it wasn't a part of that. Actually, native Hawaiians had what is called vested rights that was already inherent in the laws, not in institutions. In fact, the Hawaiian Kingdom government institution was a native Hawaiian institution itself. I think what OHA brings in is a lot of confusion. Because people tend to look at this issue of sovereignty through a racial lens, through a cultural lens. When that's not the case, and I'm sure that you folks saw what I presented here, had nothing to do with ethnicity. My dissertation has nothing to do with ethnicity. My law review articles have nothing to do with ethnicity. But I am native Hawaiian. But I'm not the point, right? Because I'm also part Haoli. My nationality, and my great-grandfather is from Sparta, Tennessee, Charles Reeves. So I'm also an American by parentage. I'm not picking a side. That's just, I'm a Hawaiian and an American, right? When I served in the military, I can reason that to be, I was an American. So I served in the military, and I loved it. Great training. So I'm not a person to pick a side. But I'm a person to try to understand and present information for people to make decisions, yeah? So, Dr. Kama Opuna Crabbe, who is the CEO for the Office of Foreign Affairs, is actually a very dear friend of mine. We're both classmates from class of '82. We have our professional sides we carry, but we're also friends. What I always try to do here is to ensure that I am not part of a native Hawaiian sovereignty movement because people tend to throw me into that group. And whenever I say I'm not, because they think, when I say Hawaiian Kingdom, I'm referring to ethnicity. The Hawaiian Kingdom was multi-ethnic. I'm talking about my great-grandfather's country that only now we're starting to learn about, right? So, in closing, an answer to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, if the Office of Hawaiian Affairs would be in the same position as you as a trustees, they could do things that they need to do within the framework of the law of occupation. And what would their duties be in light with what their mandate is? In light with what is what international law is? In fact, I was asked to draft a memorandum contracted by the Office of Foreign Affairs, the CEO, to explain OHA's position within international humanitarian law. They have that. And I provided recommendations in there in how to address issues within that framework. And I can provide that to Madam Chair, and it can be distributed. So Mike McCartney's report, and also the report to the Office of Foreign Affairs.
Thank you.
So your Mike McCartney report is regarding the Hawaiian Kingdom law?
How to, Mike McCartney's report is how the state of Hawaii can transform itself to comply with the law of occupation. Yeah.
So last question, Chair, if I could. So within the structure and the realities, what about money? How would we, all of us in this room, get paid our paychecks? Go to the bank, do whatever we do now? What is life gonna be like?
Well, that was that was when I was referring to the provisional laws that included taxation. What it would exclude is IRS taxes, because that's a foreign law. But local taxes within a state of Hawaiian county, which provides services, can be justified under the doctrine of necessity. So that's part of conforming. So no, the the key is to continue governance, but transitioning it into compliance.
So if I couldn't, maybe I didn't explain this correctly, but can we work? You know, we work so many hours and we get paid so much. And it is based upon the U.S. currency right now. So what are you, what would this new currency be? You get paid by University of Hawaii.
Yep.
We get paid by the citizens of our county through real property taxes and fees. But we're tied to the U.S. government. So we have a currency that's tied to the U.S. government. So what would happen once this new governance?
No, actually, good question. So under Hawaiian Kingdom law that existed before the occupation, actually, three currencies were recognized in the Hawaiian Kingdom. Hawaiian dollar, cala, right? The British pound and the U.S. dollar. So actually, U.S. currency is recognized under Hawaiian Kingdom law before the occupation. And they would take the most valuable of the currency, whether British, Hawaiian, or American, as a form of exchange. So, yeah, that's already covered in Hawaiian law. So that's why, that's a very good question. And then people would need to then look back into the Hawaiian Kingdom era to see what it was in eighteen ninety-three before the U.S. took over. And you actually start to see everything is there. It's not like we have to create a new currency. It's actually there, we just need to try and transition it. Yeah.
So we would recognize U.S. currency, which is tied to the federal government?
Well, it's already recognized under Hawaiian law, so, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe I'm not understanding all of your details and in depth that you are. But I'm just curious, then, do we, are we still part of the United States? Because if we are, then we would have to follow certain things, which would then take us back to the U.S. dollar to be able to utilize it. Or do we, do we divorce ourselves from that? And then you're saying we can choose from other nations, providing whatever was there for us?
Well, you're not choosing from other nations. It's that it's that Hawaiian law says three types of currencies are recognized as valid in the Hawaiian Kingdom before eighteen ninety-three. So one of them was the U.S. dollar, okay, the U.S. currency, okay? And U.S. currency is used in other countries as well. You know, it's not just limited to the United States. Now, when we're talking about divorcing from the United States, okay, that's operating on the assumption that we're part of the United States. What I was explaining here was we were never part of the United States. And that the Permanent Court of Arbitration actually recognized it. And also, I I I failed to explain this. But before the Permanent Court of Arbitration began to form the tribunal of the three arbitrators, I received a call from the Secretary General of the Permanent Court of Arbitration. His name is Secretary General Van Den Haug. He's a Dutch national, runs the registry. He calls me and he says, actually, no, I called the court for a procedural question. And they told me if I could hold on because he would like to speak to me. I was the agent representing the Hawaiian Kingdom. So he got, he jumps on the line and he says, Mr. Sai, he says that the Permanent Court of Arbitration's registry can find no evidence that the Hawaiian Kingdom does not exist. Notice he didn't say whether or not it's currently recognized because he's referring to a country, not diplomatic recognition of a government, right? And then he said also that they determined that the Hawaiian Dutch treaty is still in effect. It hasn't been canceled. And then his question was, and he prefaced it with this, in order to maintain the integrity of this case, he recommended that the Hawaiian government, with the consent of Lance Larson's counsel, provide an invitation to the United States to join in the arbitration. And if anybody can provide any evidence that Hawaii is a part of the United States, it would be the United States. So that prompted a meeting on March third in Washington, D.C. with the U.S. State Department. His name is John Crook from the U.S. Justice Department, assigned to the State Department. In that meeting, he could not believe that the case was accepted by the Permanent Court of Arbitration because supposedly we're the fiftieth state, we're not the Hawaiian Kingdom. And then I said that I was asked and recommended by the Secretary General to provide a formal invitation to the United States to join in with the consent of Lance Larson's counsel. He began to watch his Ps and Qs because he knew that what I'm going to do is reduce this conversation to writing, send it to him, that this is what we discussed, the invitation was given, and that I carbon copied it to the Permanent Court of Arbitration, that a formal invitation was given. One weekly, a few weeks later, I get a call from this Deputy Secretary General, Phyllis Hamilton. She's an American for the Permanent Court of Arbitration. She tells me that the American Embassy notified the court of their answer to this invitation. So they said to me, the Secretary General said that the United States respectfully declines the invitation to join in the arbitration, but asks permission from the Hawaiian government to have access to all records and pleadings. Now, what just happened there was that the United States did not say or show that Hawaii is a part of the United States. They acknowledged that it's a state under international law, and the proceedings are gonna continue. They did not stop it. All they asked was for permission. So we killed two birds with one stone in that situation. One, they acknowledge the Hawaiian Kingdom exists and it's not part of the United States. And number two, they asked the government of the Hawaiian Kingdom, representing the Hawaiian state, to have permission to the records. It was only after that point, and this was around late March, that the tribunal was formed in April. That's when the three arbitrators were selected. That's when the green light happened. So the 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 issue here with the United States, this is not, I'm trying to get us to break away from the United States. I'm just bringing to people's attention of what actually happened. They know Hawaii is not part of the United States, and they allow these proceedings to continue. So that's why we decided after coming back from the Netherlands, number one issue is education. We need to educate people on these things. There's so, my presentation here is just the tip of the iceberg of so many things. I'm just trying to encapsulate it in some coherent way. But I would hope, and I'm sure, it only gets you to ask more questions. And once you get two questions answered, guess what? You got ten more. Once you got ten answered, you got twenty more. And that's the process. And that's what I encourage. Yeah.
Councilor Molina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Sai. Well, I'd love to sit down and talk some.
So are you a military?
Formerly, yes.
Right, because you were kind of getting on like, hey, follow the regs.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Appreciate that because, you know, that was the impetus for you to do more research on this very important topic. And I appreciate you, like my colleague, Mrs. Nancy, I was a public school teacher. And in growing up in a public school system, I remember that textbooks were very west, had a westernized point of view on the overthrow. And there was not much thought about it. It didn't go into great detail. So I really appreciate what you're doing to implement your findings into our public schools. And you need to know
Mahalo.
the full history about this. You know, you mentioned about Hawaii separated from the United States. I I am concerned about, you know, us still being protected by the United States. We're through the way the the global movement is showing that China and Russia and personnel rather still be remain allied with the United States. Can I give you thoughts on that?
Sure, no, good question. Okay, so the problem with the U.S. bases in Hawaii, there's no Status of Forces Agreement. Okay, so if there's no Status of Forces Agreement and there's no Treaty of Annexation, then the bases here are illegal. So it's actually a direct violation of Article Two of the Hague Convention number, I believe, five or six, the Rights of Neutral States. Okay, so it says the new territory of a neutral state is inviolable. You're not supposed to put military installations on a neutral state. Otherwise, you bring that neutral state into harm's way. Now, Hawaii was actually one of four countries that were recognized as neutral states in the nineteenth century. Switzerland, Belgium, Luxembourg, Hawaii. Luxembourg and Belgium now become a part of NATO, so they gave up their neutrality. Only Switzerland is neutral. Now, neutral doesn't mean you don't have an army. Actually, Switzerland has a very large army. It's almost like a National Guard unit. I travel to Switzerland quite often. And in the Hawaiian Kingdom, we actually had an army called the Kingsguard. Today, they call it the National Guard. They just changed the name when they took over everything, right? So when we speak to the military, because of the U.S. presence here, which their presence was because of Pearl Harbor. That's the reason why things happened the way they happened in eighteen ninety-three. It wasn't about sugar. It was actually about Hawaii's strategic location, which eventually became the headquarters for the Pacific Command, right? So because of the U.S. military presence is why Japan attacked. It wasn't because of Hawaii, right? And it's because of the U.S. military presence that Kim Jong-un targeted Hawaii for nuclear strike. It wasn't because of Hawaii, it was because of the military presence. So I'm very familiar with the U.S. military presence. It's how to bring them to in compliance with the law of occupation. Now, when I, when I got an interesting point there, when I returned from the Permanent Court of Arbitration, William Ayla, who used to be a harbor master in Wainai, was involved with Makua Valley, right, back then? So this was two thousand and two thousand and one. So Makua Valley burned, and they were trying to do sessions with the native Hawaiian community. So they invited native Hawaiians to be speakers to speak to the Officers' Corps at the Twenty-Fifth Division. Now, I served a short time in G three operations at the Twenty-Fifth Division. So I got a call from one of the officers in G three saying that William Ayla recommended that I could give a presentation to the Officers' Corps. And they asked me what that topic was gonna be. And I'm gonna be following Nalani Olds, who sings, and another tattoo artist, yeah? So they asked, what am I gonna talk about? I said, well, I just got back from the Netherlands, probably talk about Hawaii's occupation. Silence, excuse me? William Ayla knew exactly why he recommended me. I'm not a singer. And I'm not really a cultural practitioner. And they said, can we see that presentation beforehand? Absolutely. So they came to my house. I did my PowerPoint, laid it all out. They looked at me, they said, oh, this is good, because they liked the way I presented it. It was just factual, like I'm an S two, I'm just giving intel. Because one of the units was about to be deployed to Yugoslavia, NATO rotation. And they had to go to JRTC in Louisiana for training in the law of occupation. That was one of the brigades. So it was set up for me to give a talk at the Officers' Club. And I'm sitting in front of the officers, and General Dubic, two-star general, was the commander, right? And then you also have the Divardi commander, he's at the division level. They also talked to me because artillery officers are all red legs. We have that that connection, right? No matter where you are. So he he introduces me, I lay out everything. And I could, I could hear a pin drop amongst these officers who were there with their wives. In fact, their wives were hitting their husbands. Because see, I can see all of you, but not all of you can see each other. And the husband's going, stop it, stop it, stop it. So at the end, question and answers. One of the questions came up from a full-blood colonel, one of the brigades that about to be deployed. He says, Keanu, I wasn't a doctor yet. Says, Keanu, what about the fact that Hawaii was, there was a plebiscite? And the people voted for Hawaii to be the fiftieth state? Isn't that, that's why we're the fiftieth state? I said, sir, excellent point. See, that's how you gotta talk to officers, right? Sir, excellent point, but let me redirect you to the regulations. That was all stemming from the U.S. Congress, which is limited to U.S. territory, which has no effect outside of its boundaries. Say, with all the respects for, that's like your brigade is going to Bosnia, and you're gonna vote for statehood in Bosnia. He said, got it. And he puts his hand on his forehead and his head goes down. The next person comes up, must be an S three operations major, must have been battalion level. He says, so Keanu, what about the military installations in Hawaii? What's gonna happen to them? I explained everything I just shared with you. The regs are not followed, Hague Convention, so-and-so, Rights of, Rights of the Territory of a Neutral State. He said, got it. Because it's really just getting information to make a decision and not coming to a snap decision when you first hear the information, right? So the issue of the presence of the U.S. military violates Hawaii neutrality under international law. Now, once occupation ends and denationalization has been rooted out and the Hawaiian Kingdom wants to enter into an alliance with the United States, China, whoever, that's that's self-determination. That's determined by the people of the country, right? I'm only looking at what's going on right now. So these are the situations where the regs have not been followed. Before you change anything, we need to comply with the regs. And then from there, we move. So that, that's where, so it's a very conservative approach. I'm not saying run, I'm saying crawl, yeah? Crawl, walk, run. Now, one thing that I share, there's Olelo Noial with my students up at UH, a Hawaiian proverb. It refers to the Kahue Vai, the water gourd, right? So the water gourd represents the person, and water in the gourd represents knowledge. The gourd with a little bit of water makes the most noise when you shake it. You guys caught that? So when you feel a little swishing is going on, it's called get more water. Fill the gourd, get a task force, get some information. That, that is where we are today. So we, this is a cock coating. This is how we move forward in light of our situation. But we cannot whitewash anymore of what happened in our past than what has happened. Because we are, we're victims. And right now, I can tell you, in knowing my genealogy, I feel that I'm actually speaking on behalf of my great-grandfather, who couldn't speak in eighteen ninety-three. That's who I'm representing, is our kupuna of that past. But also the aloha you must have in moving forward. So the practical value of history is that it's a film of the past run through the projector of today onto the screen of tomorrow. That film never changes, but you have to update the projector. Once you update the projector, you now see something that you didn't see before. And now it's called decision making. Don't make a decision until you get the information. That's the process. The word for future in the Hawaiian language is kava mahope. Va is short for manava, mahope is backwards, mamua, forward. So when you tell a Hawaiian, look to the future, they look to the past. Folks, remember that CD my brother is? Israakamaka vivoli called facing future? Facing future is kava mahope. That's why you see his back. He's facing the future. That's what we need to do. Don't be afraid of it. It's okay. And with that, mahalo noi, appreciate it.
So, Councilor Nice Chair, did you have any questions? Um, without that, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation.
Good.
Mahalo, Chair. Thank you. And does anybody else have additional questions? Well, we certainly have a lot to digest and a lot of due diligence to be doing at this time. And I would like to encourage you to reach out to Dr. Sai if you have further follow-up questions. And I'll get the information that he referenced from him as well to share with you folks.
Tomorrow. One last thing as well. So you folks have the packet, but this PowerPoint, you also have a copy of it with the videos and everything. So James has a copy. So we make sure that all you folks have it, and the directors, and whoever else. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to do a quote from the poem that was in January nineteen seventeen to our adopted daughter. It says, I could not turn back the time for political change, but there is still time to save our heritage. You must remember never to cease to act because you fear you may fail. And I kind of feel like that's where we're at now. And if there's no objections, I'll defer this item.
No objections.
Thank you. So this concludes today's Planning and Sustainable Landings Committee meeting. Thank you very much, members. This meeting is adjourned.
So, yeah, we just listened to Dr. Sai's presentation to the Maui County Council. And I'm really grateful that he presented it the way he did because it starts from A to Z and is not this doomsday alarming scary thing, which which it can be when you talk about what we're doing in a multi-layered occupation, and how we get out of this mess. But as someone who works on policy on the county and state level, both with people who don't understand this whole situation at all, and with Hawaiians that really want their kingdom back, I think this is a really useful way to kind of thread that needle, how we got here, and how do we fix it in a way that's not going to cause the house to burn down.
And, you know, that so many of these things that I feel are holding us back are based on, we can't do it because it's federal law. But it feels like, you know, with the illegal overthrow and an illegal occupation, the federal law that they're citing, they're not even abiding by it. You know, they're, we're, okay, we can't do it, but can you show me the treaty that puts it all together that we can't do it? I mean, even down to like the Jones Act, you know, why, why are we following this when we can't be shown irrefutable proof that the United States does have jurisdiction? And, and then, like, when you think about it, like, an occupier is not looking, not necessarily looking out for the people that live and work here. They're looking out for their interests, which is the United States' interest. So we're doing so many things that are not in our best interest because of a federal law that they can't prove that they have jurisdiction over this area.
I am in this building a lot when there are development proposals and land use questions. And oftentimes, we have somebody that comes in and talks about the status of this government, and talking to the council members about maybe they don't quite have the right to make a decision on this certain development, because it's on crown lands, or because it goes against kingdom law. And a lot of times, people in the gallery, and the members, and even our own county attorneys don't understand what that means. And it's not anybody's fault, they've never been sat down and explained the little thing. So I think now, regardless of what happens because of this presentation, the next time somebody comes up and talks about that, at least the members and the attorneys are going to have a base of information to work off of, that this person at the podium who's talking about crown lands is not crazy. They're not the lunatic this Dr. Sai was just talking about. They actually do, there is a basis in fact, and it's, what they're saying has validity and should be considered when we're talking about long-term decisions about land use here, you know?
Denationalization really took effect. You know, I went to Hilo Intermediate, Hilo High School, like that. And why don't we know our own history, like, of this place that we were born and raised? You know, like, is it, is it that there wasn't any history? It only takes up like one year in a 12-year education, like, one course? And so, you know, the more you ask questions, it's, it's not, I don't want to say it's shady, but it's kind of shady. That, you know, like, I mean, there's got to be a history of how it happened. And when you learn the history, and it's not exactly legit by worldwide standards, like, why do these laws that apply in all other countries don't apply in Hawaii?